Okay, all right, very good. Thanks, everybody for being here on this Thursday evening as we head into Memorial Day weekend. Not Sabina is trying to call me right now. So anyway, let me get back here. You know, and of course, hopefully can all pause for a moment during the weekend honor those people who have died to, you know, preserve our freedom in this country. And while they were serving us in the armed forces. The other thing I wanted to mention is also, we recognize that this last month of May has been the Asian American and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. And I wanted to briefly talk about that if I can get to that topic here. I know we've seen it on the news a little bit, but we I want to pay tribute to the the generations of Asian and Pacific Islanders who have enriched our country and will continue to be essential to lifting up this nation to deliver the promise of America to all Americans. And we recognize that in light of what we've seen, the the increasing anti Asian harassment and violence during the pandemic. We recognize that much more needs to be done to fight against racism and xenophobia that still exist in this country. So I know as a club, we all want to work towards that. You know, individually with our neighbors who we all care about very much. So anyway, I wanted to recognize that. Also, I want to say that we're this club is very fortunate to have two women speak tonight. We have, you know, obviously Assemblywoman Rebecca Bar-Kahan, and we have San Ramon City Councilmember Zepina Zephyr. And as you know, Rebecca represents our 16th Assembly District, and she was selected very early on by her colleagues to serve as Assistant Speaker Pro Tem. And you don't see that happening to a to a young assembly person. But she kind of stood out from the pack and she has passed. I don't know how many bills you've passed so far. I had 15, but it's probably more now. In all with bipartisan support. So you're always a favorite of our club, those who who got a chance to work with you during the campaign or we're very happy to, you know, to to work with an intelligent, active person who is at the same time raising a family and doing everything at once very effectively. So I want to, I want to welcome Rebecca to our club tonight.
Thank you. And it's good to be here and I'm loving seeing Sharon Nellis in their hats. Good to see you both. And I see Chris Duncan, who doesn't live in our area anymore, came to visit us virtually. So fun. So it's good to be with all of you. And gosh, what a week. We are a week out from the House of Origin deadline. So I presided over a session today. We got through 150 bills this afternoon. So I seem tired. It's because it's been a long day. I actually started my morning with East Bay Regional Park District in Redwood Regional Park, looking at some of the fire prevention work we need to do there with. We're just having a horrible time with tree death in the parks, and it's going to be an incredible cost, but it's really important fire prevention work. And I'm ending my day with you. And in between, we moved 150 bills to the Senate. So, you know, all of this work. But it's good to be here. And I want to thank Brody for inviting me and all of you for your just your constant work and advocacy for our community. You know, we really are such, I mean, I say I have the best community represent the legislature, and I know I'm biased, but I really do believe it. And it's in part because people are so engaged, and that's each and every one of you. I mean, we hear from you about bills, we can come here and have conversations together and you'll be, you know, you'll know about things I don't even know about. You're so informed. So it's just fun to be with all of you. And I want to thank you for all your work. So Brody asked me to give a little bit of an update on what's happening in the legislative cycle. As I mentioned, the House of Origin, maybe I didn't mention it, but the House of Origin deadline is a week from today. So we are tomorrow, tomorrow's Friday, a week from tomorrow. And so we have to move all of the assembly bills out of the assembly that will be passed this year by next Friday, unless they have an urgency. So there's a slight exception to that rule. And so we're moving way about 100 430 bills sitting on the file earlier today, and now we have 150 left. So still a lot of work to do in the next week. And but, you know, a lot of the work we're looking at focuses on COVID relief, COVID. You know, how do we get to a recovery for California? We did quite a few bills just today on EDD. And how to make sure that our government agencies are actually providing people with the level of service they deserve. These are people's benefits and they should be able to access them easily. I want to give a huge shout out to my incredible team led by Sean Kuma guy who's here. Who have been working tirelessly for the past year to help the constituents of AD16 get those unemployment checks despite the incredible hurdles that have been put up by the department. And they just have never ceased from working. They weren't in person, but they were constant in their outreach. You know, even when they were overwhelmed with cases, they continued to have virtual office hours because they wanted people to be able to access our services and get the help they needed because they knew, as we all know, that you know, whether someone gets their EDD check can mean whether there's a roof over their head or food on their table. And those are benefits that are really critical. So I want to thank them for their incredible diligence and hard work in what is really really challenging work, both emotionally and just hard work because it's so hard to navigate. And so some of the bills that I'm working on, I'm super honored this year to be carrying Planned Parenthood's priority legislation. It is a bill focused on something that we deal with in Walnut Creek all the time, which is the security of our Planned Parenthood workers and patients. And as some of you may know, Walnut Creek does some does a good amount of the abortions that are provided in the Bay Area. And so it has been a magnet for protesters who have violated the privacy and the safety of the patients and workers who are going into that clinic to seek and provide healthcare that they have a right to. And so what this bill does is it really focuses on ensuring the safety and security of all those individuals and their privacy, right? HIPAA protects your privacy as a patient, but if someone is outside recording you and then putting on the internet that you are getting healthcare, your privacy is really been violated. And so making sure that we update our laws to protect those patients because meaningful access to reproductive healthcare means that it's safe and secure. And so that bill will be voted on on the floor hopefully next week, but it's a really, I think it's an important measure in ensuring. You know, as we look at, we actually expect that despite now we have a Democratic trifecta in Washington, and that we might actually see worse uptick. So as we are able to expand the access to reproductive care, sometimes those protests actually get worse. And so obviously they have a right, their first amendment right to protest, but they are not allowed to threaten or violate the safety of the individuals there. So the second bill, which I'm really excited to be carrying was actually a bill that Hannah Beth Jackson, former Senator Jackson, who turned out carried for many years. And I took the mantle from her, and that's the pink tax. So currently, goods services that are marketed towards women. So your dry cleaning, any services you get cannot be, you cannot charge more to a woman than a man. That is not true of goods in California. So currently, goods that are cost the same amount to manufacture, but are marketed towards women, there is a tax that's put on those. Women pay more. And we know women don't make as much as men, right? I mean, there's a pay, there's an equity gap. And then we charge more for the same goods. So it's it's sort of exacerbates the problem of inequities in gender. When it comes to pay. And so this bill would say no, you for goods that cost the same to manufacture, you cannot charge a different price if you're marketing it to one gender or another. And so that bill, which I'm very excited about, was held in appropriations, so we could work on enforcement. But we will move that forward next year. An issue that is near and dear to my heart as a lifelong advocate for LGBTQ rights is a bill we're doing on binary individuals' right to be acknowledged in death. And I know I have some fellow practicing Jews on the call who will appreciate this piece of this story. So one of the people who is one of our incredible coworkers in the office, Katie brought this bill to me when she had a non-binary friend who passed away. And on the death certificate, the only two choices were male or female. Well, this person didn't, you know, identify as either of those things. And it felt really wrong to her that this person didn't get to be respected in death as in life. And as a Jew, one of the things that's really important to us is respect for the dead. And there are a lot of rituals that go around that. But to me, there was something so sacred about respecting that individual in death. I think mostly because of my Jewish upbringing, and again, that non-binary individuals deserve to be respected. And we made a lot of changes with driver's license and forms in life. But there was this loophole when someone passed away. And so we're correcting that and putting non-binary onto the death certificate. And we think that's really important. A fun bill I have that I'm doing, my sponsor is Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis, which is fun to be working with her. But I happened to when the Attorney General position became open. I happened to read the code because I was curious, what are the requirements to be Attorney General? When I opened the code, what I found was that the constitutional officers in California are all identified with the male pronoun. Now, the majority of our constitutional officers are now women, and those even the Chinese governor was described as a man in our in our code. And so I decided that wasn't right, that we haven't had a woman governor, but we will. We have women serving other offices and that that should be gender neutral language so that everybody can see themselves in in the code as it relates to these positions. And so we're fixing that code. And we we've ended up adding a lot of things in to make the code more gender neutral. But I think it's a really important step in ensuring that California has equity. Another bill that I introduced for the second time this year and still isn't moving was AB 1440, which is a bill focused on hate crimes. You know, this bill actually came out of an incident that was targeted at the synagogues in the district. Somebody was targeting them with threats and he had an arsenal of weapons and the DA and I partnered in trying to figure out how to better ensure the safety and security of the community. And sort of as we've progressed with this bill, now we know that the rise in hate crimes right now is really against the Asian and Pacific Islander community. And so they have now come on in support of this bill as well. And it's just it's a step in the right direction of making sure that we can charge properly as a hate crime threats against certain communities. And I think that's really important. And sort of the bill that I'm spending the most time on and is really very near and dear to my heart. And I know is something that this Brody had told me that this club has debated and had a lot of questions about. So hopefully we can talk about it in more depth and address your questions is AB 988. And AB 988 comes out of my work with Ton Hall, the mother of Miles Hall, who is the young man who was killed in Walnut Creek while in a schizophrenic episode by law enforcement. And Ton is just, for any of you who've had the opportunity to meet her, she is such an amazing human being. As a mother, to think that she could take what is unimaginable grief of losing a child and turn it into action to save other people's children is just the most inspiring thing I could ever imagine. And in my getting to know her and in our conversations, what really struck me about this story of Miles Hall was how much we had failed them in getting the care Miles needed for years. Right? I mean, a lot is talked about in the day he was killed, and that's, that's right. And we should talk about that. But we failed them long before that, when we didn't get him the mental health care he needed, when she didn't have access into the healthcare system, when she was told when she needed support, the only way to do it was to call law enforcement. All of that was a failure of our system. And so what has come out of that is AB 988, which is the Miles Hall Lifeline Act. And and what it does is it takes mental health crisis response out of the 911 system and creates its independent system for people to call when they're in crisis or family members in crisis. And when you call that number, you will get a trained suicide prevention expert, someone who can deal with mental health crisis. And and then if you need something beyond the phone, on someone to stabilize you on the phone, you will get a mental health crisis response team to your door to help you instead of law enforcement, although the bill does allow if there is a public safety threat for law enforcement to come in addition to the crisis response team. But you will have someone, you will have trained mental health professionals there to deescalate it. And and then stabilization services, so we can really get people to a better place. And then, you know, this is a step. I want to be very clear. This is just really the crisis response, but we also have to build up the mental health infrastructure underneath it, right? The beds to be able to give people the care they need in the long term. And you know, we work to add in some substance abuse disorders, and we need the care for that. And so there's much more work to be done. But I think 988, 25% of all officer involved shootings are people in mental health crisis. We have to take that out of the equation in order to make a dent in what is happening with law enforcement on our streets. And to be frank with you, law enforcement is supportive of this. They don't want to be doing these responses. They aren't trained. And they, you know, they understand they want the people who are trained to be responding. And so that's the work. Now, I know one of the questions that this group had was about funding. The bill actually does have its own funding mechanism. It has a fee that mirrors the 911 fee. So that will cover the phone line, although we are able to piggyback on a lot of the technology that already exists for 911. The two systems will actually be interoperable. So if you call 911, the 911 operator can transfer you to 988 if what you need is mental health services and vice versa. And then, but it will also pay for, the federal government has agreed to pay 85% of the crisis response teams, and the fee would cover the other 15% for counties to build up a crisis response infrastructure. And it's a, it's it's they're really important and a really big lift, but we're spending a lot of time and energy making sure we're getting it right, because this system needs to work for Californians. And currently, the mental health crisis response system in California does not work. So that's something we're spending a lot of time on. And I know that many of you know about and have supported, and I really appreciate me or our cities, the Tri Valley cities have come on in support of that bill, as has Walnut Creek and others. Because again, our cities want people to get the care they deserve and have easy access into it. Obviously, being able to call 988 like 911 makes it easier to access these services. Tesla Park, here we are talking about Tesla Park again. I really wish we could stop talking about Tesla Park and we could just save it. But hasn't happened yet. So we're still talking about it. But we've both Senator Glazer and I have reintroduced legislation to save Tesla Park out in Livermore from the expansion of the Off-Road Vehicle Park. We are committed to getting it done. We think that the Alameda Courts came out with an opinion this year. And just recently in February, that said that it was appropriate for state parks to preserve the land using the off-road vehicle funds. And so we really, and that the EIR had to be thrown out because it didn't preserve enough of the land, which sets us back a decade to start over on this fight. So we're going to get this settled because I am not willing to let the state spend another decade of legal fees on this fight. When what our community wants is to preserve this land and move on. So that's the goal. And I really hope the next year I don't have to stop with Tesla Park because Tesla Park is saved. And then the environment, as many of you know, I am, the environment is the thing that I cared, have always cared deeply about and continue to, one of them, I guess, a lot of these things are, I'm a passionate person. But but climate change is really the thing that keeps me up at night because the wildfires and my kids inheriting a planet that's uninhabitable is frightening to me. And I imagine to many of you, as I mentioned, I started my day with the East Bay Regional Park District and the the tree death that they're dealing with that we are afraid will cause wildfires is from the drought conditions. It's from climate change. So we have to do everything in our power to really make a difference in climate change. So I introduced a couple of wildfire prevention bills, the largest source of emissions now are those wildfires. So we have to prevent them to really get ahead on climate change. And then I also introduced an important measure that actually didn't make it out of appropriations, but I continue to try to push the PUC on, which is ensuring that all of the batteries that are sitting on our grid, so the behind the meter storage that schools and homes now have is accessible on the grid. So we have all this clean energy sitting there. When we were having rolling blackouts in in August, we had enough energy stored in those batteries to prevent the rolling blackouts, clean energy here on the grid in California that we cannot deploy because the PUC has now created a marketplace to deploy that behind the meter energy. And so what the bill would have done was force the PUC to do that. Now, the bill was held, but PUC can still do that. So I was in an oversight hearing last week pressuring PUC to do it. So still a priority of mine, but alas, the bill will not move. And you know, I don't know if you have any questions about the budget. The May revise came out and we will see changes from the May revise, but there's a lot in there. We have a $75 billion surplus, which is insane. And you know, we got to figure out what to do with. I think two things that are a priority for me in the budget that I'm really fighting for are, we know from both the LAO, our our experts and the Department of Finance, the administrations experts that we are going to see a downturn, we are going to see a decrease in budget and be in the red in the next two years, right? So right now we have a surplus that's going to change next year. And so in order not to cut programs, what we need to be doing is saving in to the rainy day fund and ensuring that these vital programs are able to fund them in the years to come. And so I really think that we need to, that is one thing that needs to change from the May revise is we need to save so that in the years to come, those most vulnerable Californians were able to protect them. So we will, that is something I'm fighting for. The other thing I think is really incredible about having the surplus is we can pay down more of our pension funds. And paying down our Calsters and our Calpers are basically direct payments into our cities and our schools. Because then they have, they don't have to pay as much for the pension funds, and they have more budget to play with. And so I think that's really an investment in education that when you look at the return on those immediate pay downs, it's pretty incredible. And so I think that's also a smart fiscal policy that we need to do more of. And there was some of that in the May revise, but to be honest, I think we should do more. So, you know, we continue to support small businesses. I have a couple of small business bills, one of them passed over to the Senate today with unanimous bipartisan support, which is exciting. It's a bill that tries to prevent unnecessary litigation for small businesses while at the same time ensuring the workers at our small businesses have a meaningful right to paid leave. And, you know, we're putting a lot of money into wildfire prevention, $2 billion and climate change, and that's all really key homelessness. We know that homelessness is one of the issues California wants us to address. So not only are we moving bills, today we moved a bill on homelessness accountability. But we're also going to fund homelessness programs to try to get more people off our streets, although I will add back to 988, the 30% of our homeless population is in mental health crisis. So if we do something on the mental health side and the substance abuse side, it will help our homelessness crisis. Those two things go hand in hand. And so that's a little bit about what I'm doing. I think I said a lot, but I want to make sure we have time for questions.
Okay. I have a question. I hope I know some other folks do as well, but we were learning about the history of 988 and how Oregon apparently has been able to get that going. And I'm thinking for those doubters of whether it's going to work or not, have we learned some things from the Oregon experience, even though it's been a short time that may be able to help us pass it here in California?
Yeah. So nice. So just as by way of background, so yes, the Hoots Up in Oregon has done it, Dallas, Texas has done it. And I, it's funny, my family is actually from Dallas originally and moved out to California. And I find it funny that Dallas is ahead of parts of California because that's not what I expect, but they are. And they've done, I mean, they've seen a reduction of arrests by 500 in just the first year in their program. I mean, we're decriminalizing mental health, which is what we should be doing, but also the cost savings, Richard, of these programs that are proving, I mean, from ER visits, from public safety costs, it's pretty phenomenal. So there's a lot of benefit to it that we've seen from those programs and they're working. And there haven't been, you know, we haven't seen huge problems with it. But 988 was actually so because it's a telephone line, it had to be enabled by the federal government. They control our phone lines. And so here's a fact for you, this shocks me, may shock all of you. The legislation that enables all the states to put into place these 988 systems was passed unanimously by Congress. I didn't know they passed anything unanimously anymore. Then Mitch McConnell and AOC came together on this effort. He's pretty incredible to me. And then it was signed into law by former President Trump. So this actually was enabled by the former Congress and the former president with unanimous support. And I think that just says something about where our country is going on mental health and that we all agree that this has to change. And we have learned a lot. But what that means is that every state now has the opportunity to do this. And one of the sponsors of the bill is the Kennedy Forum. And they are doing this in many states. So we're also working with other states to see what they're doing, how their fee works to ensure that we're learning from all those programs. But yes, we've learned a lot and part of the and locally, actually, Los Angeles County has a program that's pretty far ahead. And a lot of what we're doing in our bill is modeled after Los Angeles County and there. So like the language of when law enforcement will be involved is coming out of Los Angeles County. They've come up with a really innovative way to ensure that we're not using law enforcement when it's unnecessary. But ensuring that it's available if there is a public safety threat. So we have a lot of places to learn from, and we're using all of it.
Right. I love to hear that. Especially in light of what's happened over the last year and before that with the mental health and the deaths, unnecessary deaths really that happened because you didn't have the trained people involved. So I know somebody had a question about 1139, the AB What is your feelings about that?
So I, I now sit on the Utilities and Energy Committee, so I had an opportunity to weigh in initially on it when it was in committee. And it took additional amendments just today that I have not had the chance to look at. So I don't, I can't speak to its current, I think they, they, they were voted on today in the assembly. And I understand that it makes additional amendments to protect current users. And but I'm concerned. I mean, I think, you know, what she's trying to do with, for those who don't know, I guess, wait, let me back up because Paul probably knows what 1139 is. 1139 is a bill by Assemblymember Gonzalez focused on rooftop solar. And what it's focused on is that I'm a rooftop solar owner. So when I use rooftop solar and my, I, I produce all the energy I need, I don't pay much to PG&E, right? Because I'm producing my own energy. That being said, they're not purchasing my energy, but they are distributing my energy, right? They're up, they're keeping up the lines, they're doing all the work that it takes to distribute the energy throughout the grid. And so I'm not paying my fair share of that distribution as a solar user. That's true. And the studies actually do bear out that our low income communities that don't have access to as many solar panels are paying more because people who own solar are paying less. And that is unjust and inequitable. And that's what she's trying to get at. And that I actually really agree with. And the way she's doing it, I think, is not the solution. So that's sort of where I came out in committee agreeing with the premise of the problem, but saying that we can't disincentivize rooftop solar to the extent that this bill would because rooftop solar has to be a part of the answer to climate change. I mean, we as a state are saying, let's go to all electric cars. Maybe not all electric, maybe hydrogen, but we're going to a 100% clean vehicle future, which will require even more energy than we are producing today. And and yet we're having rolling blackouts now, right? Without all those electric vehicles on the grid, right? So we have to be producing as much clean energy as possible. And I spoke a little bit about those blackouts. When we go into surges in the need for energy, what we do is import dirty energy from out of state, right? That's our solution right now, which is why I'm focused on this behind the grid, behind the grid energy piece. But the more solar we have on our rooftops, the less we have to do that. And you know, yes, one of the arguments being made for this bill is that large scale solar is more efficient. That's true. I don't disagree with that. But you guys all live near one of the places where they keep trying to put in large scale solar, Livermore. And it is actually really impractical to put large scale solar in most places. You have to be very close to the grid to connect to a substation. So very few parts of even Livermore, which is an ideal place for large scale solar are are even open to the possibility of getting a large scale solar installation. So although that's important too, it's not the only solution, right? We need wind. I just voted on an offshore wind bill that I think is really critical. We need offshore wind. We need rooftop solar. We need large scale solar. We need hydro. We need it all, right? And so we cannot disincentivize rooftop solar. And I think that's too much of what the bill did. And I can't say whether it still does that today because I did hear were made. So I will be looking at this.
So there may be some amendments that could help resolve that issue, maybe?
Hopefully. I mean, that's kind of what I heard, but I haven't looked at that. So I don't want to, I don't want to say. But I know that, and look, we've, you know, we're hearing from our constituents, we understand your concern. Clean energy is a priority for me. So I didn't support it in utilities and energy.
Okay. We have some other questions for Rebecca?
Yeah, I have a question about the utilities trying to block the 988 because they don't want to put it on to their system. And what can we do to make our views known? What can we do to support you?
So I will say that, so the federal government has said, and the interesting thing about 988 is that the federal government said that the phone providers have to have, 988 has to start ringing in July of 2022. So in July 2022, no matter what we do as a state, if you dial 988, you will get the suicide prevention hotline. Now, if we do nothing, then you will get today's current suicide prevention hotline, which is a problem because one of the things that's going to happen between now and July 2022 is a nationwide campaign to get people to understand this new number is available, like 911. So we expect the number of mental health calls to go up by 30%. And so people will sit on hold with the suicide prevention hotline, and they will not get a meaningful crisis response, which is the goal of the bill here. So that, that's true. So they are not fighting doing the phone system. That's happening. That fight happened in Washington and they lost. With you. But the fight that we're having here that the the telecoms are engaged in is what should the breadth, the nature of 988 be, right? We could just do what what I described, which is build up our infrastructure a little bit to make sure you get a phone line that gets answered. Right? And we could put that fee on your bill. And actually, the telecoms support that. They support just putting a fee on your bill that would cover the the telephone system to answer 988 in July 2022. What they do not support is is putting, is having a fee that would include the 15% to provide that would include the 15% to provide those mobile crisis response teams. And we think that is so critical to providing a comprehensive system that actually works. And then addresses what I talked about earlier, which is again, we'd have to have law enforcement showing up if we don't have those crisis response teams. And in order to access that 85% federal match, we have to get that 15%. And that's a good return on investment. I'd pay 15% to get 85%. And so we think that's a really critical part of this system. So I just want to be clear about what it is they're opposing. Um, although again, we have bipartisan support in the legislature. Um, so we do have really strong support here and I'm proud of that. Um, just like they had bipartisan support in Washington. Um, so what can you do to support it? We have a, and I don't know if Sean has it handy, but we can get it to Brody later. We actually have a, um, you can sign a petition to show your support for 988. Um, and that's really helpful. When we had hearings, actually many of our local community called in to show their support for 988. And that was incredible to hear. Um, cause fees are hard. I mean, this, and I'm not somebody who votes for every fee in the legislature. I believe we should only be charging a fee where we get a clear return and good government services out of it. I believe this is that case, which is why I'm not only supporting and I'm carrying the bill. Um, but you know, your support is needed because this is going to be hard. Um, and we want the governor to understand that there's broad support and there's broad support in districts like mine, right? I represent a very fiscally conservative district and I believe this is something that my constituents broadly support. And I actually know that.
Great. Thank you.
Any, uh, any other questions for Rebecca? Let me read that.
Oh, there, Sean did have it handy always. Thanks, Sean.
Okay. Okay, Sean. Okay, so.
Veronica has a question. I see her hand up. I'll call on you Veronica. Go for it.
Yeah, go ahead Veronica.
Well, just, thank you for coming and speaking tonight, Assembly Member. And I'm just curious because I know that in San Ramon, they're actually trying to do a citywide mental health crisis response. That maybe Sabina, the council member Sabina can talk about later. How would 988 kind of integrate with maybe cities or counties that have already set up a mental health crisis response?
That's a great question. So we as a state are charged, we will set up the infrastructure, the 911 style infrastructure for the phone, right? That can't be done at the local level. And then the way we believe it'll work, although this is still a work in progress on the bill, is that the response that I mentioned, and so under, to be clear, under the 988 legislation from the federal government, the calls have to be answered by the suicide prevention line. So that we can't put on the local level. That has to happen. Um, but then what will happen is you, you don't know this, but when you call 911, what happens is you get a law enforcement. That's most of the people answering are law enforcement. But let's say you call with a fire, right? They need the fire department. What happens behind the scenes is they bring a fire person on to listen to the call. And then the person listening coordinates the response. So that's what we, how we want this to work. Because we want a seamless experience for the user. We don't want you to get transferred if you're in crisis. Last thing we want is someone in crisis to be, please hold, we're going to connect you to Contra Costa County, right? No, that's not what we want. We want you to be on the phone with the trained professional. And you don't know that behind the scenes, someone from Contra Costa County who handles the mental, the crisis response teams is listening and saying, great. We need this person, this person and this person, and we're going to send them out, right? That is a user you don't realize, but that's, so they will be the ones actually coordinating the mental health response for people who need it. We believe that actually a vast majority of these calls may be able to be handled by the person on the phone. But if there is a needed response, the county or the city will be brought on to listen and then coordinate that response on the ground. So the, and the counties will be the ones managing the mental health crisis response teams and doing that. So our, our cities and our counties like Contra Costa County and San Ramon and the Tri Valley, which is setting up an amazing system, they're work, the cities are working together to have like a mental health emergency room with access to community health, which is phenomenal, right? So a lot is happening in our community and we're going to tap into all of that. Um, but we're just setting up the infrastructure for ease of, again, ease of access and then making sure that um, the user has a really seamless experience to get a care.
All right. Anybody else? Oh, you got Sheila?
Yeah. I sent in a question maybe late today at three o'clock or something. And basically my question is about, uh, what's happening in the state of Washington? And they have passed environmental bills beyond anything and any other state has done. And so what I have put in my question is, um, SB 5022 in Washington, which will reduce plastic pollution in Washington by banning certain polystyrene foam products. Styrofoam as such as, oh God, I have to read my own writing. Plates and cups, Washington, Washington will be the first state in the nation to enact a statewide info request policy. Well, in any case, it's what they're doing in Washington. And I, I'd love to hear if you know anything about that. And I would love to work on this.
So we have a couple of bills moving focused on plastic. I have to say, this is one of the things that I've said this before to this club. I think that seeing how, so plastic, um, legislation polls at about 75% in California, 75% of Californians, which is phenomenal. To be clear, that's bipartisan, right? I mean, we don't have 75% of California that are Democrats, but that, that is actually true. So 75% of Californians want us to do something about plastic. Um, and yet we failed to pass plastics legislation two years in a row, which is insane, right? So we are not doing what California wants us to do on plastics. And I want to be clear about that. Um, so, uh, we need to do more. Now there is a bill moving from Laura Friedman that sounds fairly similar to what you're talking about. I think we're voting on it tomorrow and I'm hopeful that it'll pass, but again, we haven't passed these in the past. And, um, so what can you do? We need your voice. The plastics companies, the oil companies, they're winning when California wants us to do this. I mean, it's going to, to be clear, what's going to happen next is the voters are putting it on the ballot. You are going to get to vote on it and it will pass. I mean, nothing polls at 75%. That's insane. So you will pass plastics, um, a plastics ban or some sort of plastic legislation through the ballot. But I fear that's how we're going to have to do it because my colleagues aren't willing to vote for it for some unknown reason. Well, no, because the special interests have such a stronghold. That's the answer.
All right. Anybody else? Well, thank you. I hope you have some time with your family this Memorial Day Rebecca and your wonderful family. And, uh, thank you for being here. And Sean, thanks for, for also being here. And, um, our, uh, our next dynamic female speaker from our area is Sabina Zephyr. And she is my councilwoman and was happy to help her in her first, in her first campaign. And, uh, she came in in December 2018 and then, uh, was able to get through the consent of their fellow council members. She was appointed vice mayor at that, at that, at that time. She's been an accomplished technology leader. She's the kind of person we need nowadays in government. Uh, she's a community leader, mentor, and she's a great advocate for the youth of our community as well. So anyway, I'm glad to have her with us tonight. Welcome Sabina.
Thank you so much. It's always such a pleasure to come to this club's meeting. You guys have pretty much seen me from 2016, you know, starting my run for city council. Being on council, running for mayor. Um, and I continue to stay engaged with the community and it's, I would certainly say it's been great having a seat at that table. Um, you know, San Ramon City Council is, um, has not been very progressive, but I think the last couple of years they've spent with me. They pay attention when I raise something which is of importance. So, um, I'm glad to be representing San Ramon there. Um, wanted to start off with some updates. I was, I, I was just looking at things that I could update you on and so much has happened. So I will give you a few important updates and then point you to where you can uh, continue to receive updates and continue to learn what's happening. It has been happening in the city. First of all, COVID-19 updates, right? Let's start with that. So 53,000 residents in San Ramon have been fully vaccinated. Um, one of the things we noticed early on that the vaccination rate was low in San Ramon. And when we dug deeper into the data, we realized our average age is 38 in San Ramon. So obviously, yeah, the turn wasn't there. Um, so you know, once we started vaccinating and actually our, um, over 65 population at that time, uh, almost 97% were fully vaccinated, which was, which was great. Um, and we have a population of 85,000 and of that 33% are actually under the age of 18. Um, so 63% is a pretty good number for us to be vaccinated as a community. Uh, we are still meeting virtually. Um, I think we're all waiting for the state mandate and this or the governor's orders and June 15th. Uh, when, you know, there might be, um, some loosened restrictions and we can hopefully meet in person in city hall. Uh, but we've been having all our meetings via Zoom and, um, when I joined the council, that was one of my passions, that we'd be able to do live meetings. And I always got an excuse why we couldn't do it. And then COVID happened and Zoom happened. And now it's become a norm that we have to allow people to be able to join virtually as well as in person. Uh, because not everybody can make it down to city hall on a 7:00 PM Tuesday night. So excited about that. Um, so one of the things that Veronica brought about as well, and I wanted to talk about and would, uh, you know, the update from the assembly member was a great on 988. Uh, our fire chief actually brought a proposal to us that while 988 was being, you know, obviously it's a bill, it needs to be passed, there's funding. It will probably take about a year, year and a half to fully be rolled out. In the meantime, what can we do as a city at our local level to implement something, you know, ahead of time? And the proposal he put in front of the council was actually, uh, very creative. Um, I think this is first of its kind in the country that's going to happen. Uh, so what the, basically what the fire chief, the police and the city manager worked out is that when you make a 911 call, uh, when it goes to the EOC, basically the law enforcement shows up and fire, uh, the fire department is staged in the background, if you will. And so the fire department is only brought in when, you know, they, they feel okay, there's a mental health requirement. Uh, the proposal in front of us that, uh, the fire chief brought is that any 911 call, uh, related to mental health, the fire department uh, shows up first because they have the right people in the fire department uh, that are actually that deal with this all the time and they be there as the first responders. And then the law enforcement is staged in the background. And so kind of flipping how the response goes out to these 911 calls. We thought it was, you know, given what has happened, especially in Danville in the last couple of years. Um, that could have been totally avoided, uh, if something like that had happened. Uh, and so, you know, we are very supportive of, um, uh, flipping this. And when a 911 call for mental health comes in, a 5150 comes in, um, it's the fire department that responds, they evaluate, they will have, um, uh, trained people. Um, and it's not going, we talked to the fire chief, we asked him questions about what would training look like? And for them, it's a part of their normal training. So we've been very supportive of that. Um, and you know, while we wait for 988 to get rolled out, and even then we feel that it's, the adoption is going to take some time. Uh, so when somebody does call 911, it's still, you know, the response goes from the fire department versus, uh, law enforcement. Um, you can read more about it and look at the PowerPoint again on our city's website. Uh, we posted it there and on updates, it's on the latest updates, uh, on the main page. Um, secondly, we're also going through, um, a housing element, um, update with the city. So for 2023, 24. Um, so what a housing element update is that every eight years, cities are required to, uh, look at the RENA numbers that come down from the state and ABA, basically, uh, we're required to, um, reevaluate the needs of the community and update our general plan. Uh, along with that, we're also updating our climate action plan, uh, to plan for, for the next eight years. And so that one is in process right now. That's been worked on and, uh, and you know, we're um, budget planning is also happening. Um, it's been, um, we feared that because of COVID, you know, we might actually see, um, a hit to our budget in a way that, you know, we've been fortunate because we are not as heavily reliant, um, on businesses. We are, you know, more heavily reliant on real estate taxes. Um, and real estate prices, especially in the suburbs have been going up. You know, as sales have been happening, we've seen increase actually is some of that real estate tax coming back to us. So we've been able to balance our budget, which is about 121 million, uh, for this upcoming year. We've had numerous workshops around it. Uh, we've been looking at the American Recovery Act, you know, and how much the cities will get out of that. San Ramon is getting about $8 million, uh, spread over two years, but it can be used for very specific reasons. Um, that it's earmarked for, uh, for certain things we can use it for. Um, so we can't use it, for example, to replenish our pension funding. Um, so that's been in plans. We should, uh, vote on it and have it approved by the end of May to be published for June, July. Um, again, you know, it's, it'll be published on our website. It has some really good graphics, easy to understand where our money is going, how we're spending it. So anybody can learn about it from there. Um, what else have we done in the last year? Some of the buildings that we've updated in San Ramon. Um, so the Alcosta Senior Center was actually fully updated just before the pandemic. Um, so hopefully once everything opens up, um, you guys can go and take a look if you haven't already. And, um, it looks beautiful. We've kind of upgraded, um, all our city buildings were kind of the eighties looking pink inside, you know, old carpets. We've kind of updated the palette for it to look, um, more welcoming blue and white and brown. So we paid attention to that. We paid attention to, uh, making sure our lighting um, is, you know, we're saving, um, energy, we're being more compliant with, um, you know, um, our energy resources. We're, uh, using a lot of city and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but a large percentage of our city facilities are now getting energy through MCE. So we're either in the deep green plan, which is like 100% renewable, um, for our city buildings. Or, uh, it's, you know, I think, uh, 80%, which is the next level. Um, and you know, our goal is really go 100% renewable energy for all our city buildings and to power them. Uh, we've also updated the San Ramon Community Center that will be open to public. Um, there's also an art gallery in there. So, uh, during, actually this week, we're having the Art and Wind Festival. And you can actually walk through those galleries and look at the art that we have on the walls right now. During the pandemic, we've also been running a free business assistance program, which basically, uh, we've retained a consulting firm which helps businesses uh, find the PPE loans that come through the federal government, through the state government. Uh, and that has helped, uh, from the data I have about 5,000 residents in San Ramon, about 43 businesses and help them get, um, over $12 million as part of this, this program. Um, so we haven't given any money, but we've, we've paid the consulting firm to provide free services to our small businesses in order to find out which loans are available to them. Um, we also are constructing a public safety complex. Uh, so basically in partnership with the fire department, the city of San Ramon, we're building a brand new emergency. Um, an EOC, uh, emergency operations center. Um, right where the, our fire department is basically, and this will be for all of San Ramon Valley, because the fire department serves all of San Ramon Valley. But we're very fortunate that this is going to be in San Ramon because, um, you know, the response time will be very quick for our residents. Um, as they do their training right there and, you know, they don't go out of, out of town or out of county to do some of their trainings because they'll have the facility right there. So what happened as part of that upgrade is that we got some money from the fire department to upgrade our city center. Uh, sorry, not city center, our city hall, where our city hall is now going to be the one stop shop for everything you need. Um, so then we built new counters. So before you had, some people had to go over for a permit center over on, um, what is it? Off of, um, Cro Canyon. And now all of it has moved, all of it has moved into the city center. So it's, I keep saying city center, has moved into city hall. And so you, you will just have to go to city hall for any of the services you need from the city, which, which is going to be pretty cool. Um, and, um, so the city hall has been upgraded. It'll be open to public. We probably might do a soft ribbon cutting again, just to kind of welcome people back in as it has been going through upgrades. In a way it was good timing because, uh, we were meeting virtually. And so that gave us time to actually be able to upgrade, uh, create a city hall. Um, so what are some of the events coming to San Ramon? Um, I'm excited about this because I think people have been locked down. People have been, you know, really not been able to go out. So we're finally glad that we're able to bring some of the events back. Uh, this week, as you all know, the Arts and Wind Festival was a huge event for San Ramon. Um, we decided not to do that in person. We still don't want large gatherings. We decided not to do that in person. We still don't want large gatherings, but it's going to be a virtual celebration. And so there's a lot of activities going on. There's actually an activity bag you can go and pick up from the community center. And and then do some of these activities virtually. We're also doing three films over the weekend, Friday, Saturday and Sunday in the Dordie Station. What is it? The theater, the Dordie Valley Theater, the high school, and so that will be in person. I think it's the kite flyer, the kite flyer up and a couple of other movies. It it can seat six hundred people, but we will be seating two hundred people. So you can actually go on the city's website. It's called. Ardenwindfestival.org, I believe. And get your tickets, send them an email and they'll give you your tickets. So if you want to watch a free free movie over the weekend, Memorial Day weekend, you can. We are doing actually on July fourth, we will be doing the fun run. In San Ramon, so that's coming back. Details will get posted. For that one, concerts in the park are also coming back. Again, all of these events have been planned with, you know, socially distant in a way that people can enjoy being their little bubble. And still listen to the concerts, be with their families, but be outdoor. So you know, anything that is outdoor, we. You know, we're we're creating a space for people to be able to get out safely. The galleries, like I said, are also going to be opening, are, you know, going to be opening as part of the Art and Wind Festival and then moving on from there. So. The city hall has a gallery. In case you guys didn't know, we have four galleries in San Ramon at our different community centers and. City Hall. And so the city hall and the Al Costa Community Center Gallery is going to be open. And so I have actually taken a look at what we have in city hall and it's somebody who's taking pictures of San Ramon. And she's put them on those steel laminated boards. So it looks beautiful. So take a look. Walk through and you know, let me know what you guys think. And then our open space committee is also doing summer hikes, spring, summer hikes, and they have their schedule posted. So if you want to join one of those hikes. Those are led by one of our committee members there. And then if you happen to be at the corner of Bollinger and Al Costa, we've actually erected a brand new flagpole. For commemorative flags and we just approved the pride flag to be raised there in the month of June. And so that is going to be, the council agreed that that's going to be our flag pole for commemorative flags for. You know, what whatever want to express. So if you guys ever have a flag that you want us to raise, do let us know. Since we have a special poll, we we want to flag there always. And then we have city, city hall lights that we're very happy to light up for any occasion. So reach out to me, let me know and I'll make sure we light up city hall to celebrate an occasion. That's kind of some of the events that are coming coming up. On a personal level, I'm chairing the finance committee now for the city. I chair the Iron Horse Regional Committee. I'm also city's liaison to the Tri Valley Water and Dublin San Ramon Services District. And I believe council member Kumaga is also a liaison from Dublin on that one. And then I'm also on the executive board of California League of Cities. Representing the East Bay to advocate on behalf of our cities to the legislature in Congress. And actually, just before this, I was at that event and we had our congressman McNerney, the Sony. And you know, we we were advocating about our water infrastructure, our housing, our transportation needs. So. It's important for us to raise those issues at the legislative level with Assembly Member Rebecca. She's been a guest there and as well as the Congress. Congress folks. So that's kind of what I've been doing. And then I was going to say, there is a lot of lot more information, lot more happening in San Ramon than I can share. So there's several ways to stay connected. And I'm very proud that one of the things, one of my really goals was that when I. Coming on to city council was how do we improve communication? And I have to say, we've done phenomenal. We've created an office of communication under the city manager's office. And the city has really raised the bar on how we're sending out communication. So. We're doing, the city manager is doing a weekly newsletter, which has a lot of information. We do a quarterly San Ramon City Report, probably you, all of you get that in your mailboxes. It's also digital now. We have the website, of course, and you can subscribe to updates through the website. We do a senior newsletter called Encore. You probably get that in the mail as well, I'd imagine. And then the city has its Facebook, its Twitter, Instagram and YouTube. And all our meetings, council meetings, commission meetings are now broadcast live on our YouTube channel. Which is great. And then the city also now provides monthly city updates via YouTube and one of the council members. It used to be called the mayor's breakfast, but it's since shifted to more of a city updates. And one of the council members joins that and we'll invite legislators, we invite, you know, folks from the community. Answer any questions. So that's the, that's a Friday. I can't remember. It's the first or the last Friday of the month that we're doing that. If you ever want to volunteer, we have a city volunteer program, City Lights Volunteer Program. I know some of the people have been volunteering at the Cro Canyon Gardens, pulling weeds. I was volunteering at the farm. We were cleaning out the barn and things like that. So. The good thing is you get to meet some other community members as well. So it's always, and it's, you know, right now the weather is beautiful. So it's good to get out in the community. As for myself, I do put out a monthly communication. Well, now I've been doing more of a bi-month, bi-monthly newsletter. So if you're not subscribed to that, let me know. I'll make sure you're subscribed. Or you can go on my website. I'm also doing. A monthly communication, basically, community conversations and invite. Some of the leaders in our community to have like a frank conversation and it's been made possible by having some amazing people that have joined a communications team. Including one of the members from, you know, from the club who's been very, they've been phenomenal in kind of helping me. Put out this communication. I am also going to have a summer internship again this year. I think it's been. My, the young, the youth in San Ramon, I would say have been phenomenal and very much a part of my campaign. They've and very much, you know, part of my journey here. I probably hear more from a youth. Then, you know, anybody else in the community. And so I want to make sure that. As part of my office, I create a program for them where they're able to learn about. Local government and policy and what it looks like to serve at a local level, which is extremely different because a lot of times. Generally, our youth will hear about, you know, they want to work with a congressperson or they want to work with the. You know, with the assembly office, which is great because those opportunities are provided, but at a local level, not a lot of local electeds do that. I know Sean does that too and myself as well because we are passionate about, you know, building the bench for the next generation. So I will have that internship program. If you want, I can send you the flyers. So you can publish it. I had a closing date, I think of June, June first and one of my youth leads told me, well, we have finals week. So can you push it out? So we'll, you know, we'll close on that later in the. In the week of June, the first week of June. I think those are all the updates I have. Happy to answer any questions. I know I shared a lot.
So yeah.
I have a, I have a question, kind of curious as to the the marketplace development plan, how that's coming along as. Is it just kind of being discussed or is there any movement on developing the the marketplace there?
Yeah. So we actually, that is, I probably get get like five to ten emails on that topic every single day. We've, we have a frequently asked questions page now where you can go and look at, you know, some of the real details there. So. What we've seen so far is just a concept review back in December, which came to the commission. And since then, we haven't heard back from the developer. So. Community pressure, you know, we're obviously very much aware of how the community feels about it. I cannot share my opinion, but I can tell you that, yes, we're we're all hearing this. One of the things which as part of, so we had our, once a year, we have our. If you would, we like to call it an offsite or where all the council members come and talk about what their priorities are. And one of the things we agreed upon is that we also need to protect our retail. Housing is very important. We all understand that. We want to build a community which is. You know, housing friendly, bike friendly, transportation friendly, but it also has. Sorry, was there a question? So I'll get to that after this. So I think that's what we're trying to, we're, so we're trying to make sure that retail has just as much importance. As, you know, on a priority list as does everything else. I think there was a question about senior housing.
What happened to the bike paths that they were supposed to build and the walking over Bollinger where the Bollinger and Crow Canyon? Over the Iron Horse Trail?
So are you talking about the overpass, the bridge?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's in the design phase, about thirty five percent of it has been completed, the design. We've had to navigate over some utility lines and things like that. But yeah, it's in the design phase. It should, according to the timeline, I've been given by staff. They should start building it early twenty twenty two. And so it would take us about a year and a half to two years to build that bridge. And so that's part of our larger bike master plan. Basically, our, you know, our bike master plan is a long term bike plan where we want to make sure that we. You know, we connect the different bike lanes together as part of this this master plan. We, the design's been approved. And now the implementation has started. We've upfront funded it with about ten million, but it's going to cost us about forty million. So as we get the money, as we put it in budget year over year. And as we maintain our streets, we we're planning to make sure that the bike master plan is ruled as part of that.
Sabina, I had a question. Good to see you. There's going to be a gas station built across from Costco on the San Ramon side of the street. With thirty plus pumps, from what I understand. Is there anything going to be done to mitigate the effect that that's going to have on car traffic down that street? Which is not a really wide street. It's Fostoria. And what can you tell us? And also, when are we going to see these gas stations up and running? You have any idea?
Yeah. So that's been, that has been approved and there's going to be about sixteen stations on, you know, on both sides. You'll have. I guess, you know, it doubles as thirty two. And they've, I think they're spending about a million dollars just for the traffic mitigation. Over there, putting in new lights, putting, you know, the whole. Whatever their traffic mitigation plan has been. So and that's going to be paid by the developer, not by Costco, not us. We had overwhelming requests from San Ramon residents. To continue to bring that. Obviously, there's a couple of reasons. Revenue is one. But also the ease of having a service station right here in San Ramon. Where people can go to, you know, a local gas station, a local Costco gas station versus driving to Livermore were some of the reasons that people supported this. And yeah, traffic is top of mind, of course, and we're keeping an eye on that very much.
What about the senior housing that's going into Bishop Branch? Won't that create a lot of traffic?
So that's part of the overall approval for Bishop Branch that was approved, the forty five hundred. Homes over the next twenty five years that were approved. And so actually, there's an advantage that if you put senior housing, you're not going to need as many cars. And this is not, you know, because this is not senior housing. I think this is, are you talking about the senior housing or are you talking about the facility? That is coming.
I think the senior housing that was in the paper.
Yeah, I believe it. That's the senior facility they're talking about. That was in the. Yeah. And and so actually, it's going to reduce cars. Right now, we get about thirty thousand cars that already drive into Bishop Branch. For the offices. So when some of those are converted into housing, it's, you know. We think it's going to balance it out. The other thing which Bishop Branch is doing, that if you will live. In that community, you will get a free bus pass and they're building three transit centers there. And so you can take, you know, you'd see those buses that take you to Bart. Basically, Bishop Branch, if you live in that community, is going to pay for you and create, you know. Like I said, two, three transit centers throughout that community to make it more of a, more of a transit friendly community. So and then according to state, you know, law now, they have for one house, they can allow one car. So the goal is to drive people to own less cars as well, make it more walkable, bikeable. And so and more transit friendly and create more sources of transportation there.
Where, where, where in Bishop Branch is it supposed to go?
So the entire, the Bishop Branch plan, it starts at one end where Chevron is and that empty lot next to Chevron, but that's. Phase three. So that won't come probably for another twenty years. What what you're going to start seeing is where city center is across from that. Originally, if you remember, city center was planned in a way that we were going to have housing on top and. Retail at the bottom and then it changed to where they said. We don't want housing on top. We actually want housing off to the side. So the retail was reduced a little bit to allow for housing on the side. So. The first buildings you will see are that empty space between city center and city hall. Where we will get, be getting a hotel and we'll be getting the first set of apartment complex. There. And then basically the parking lots, Bishop Branch is taking some of the parking lots and one of their buildings. To build housing, replace one of the buildings with housing and then build housing in some of the parking lots. Along with the city green. I've asked, actually, I've asked my staff to publish the entire plan at the corner there if they can. So that people can walk up and see what the future looks like, what's coming, because we know what's coming. We know it's going to be beautiful community, but. I think it's very important for people to be able to see, you know, this is, this is what's planned for the future, even if it's the next twenty five to twenty eight years.
Thank you.
Is the, you know, the prod, the Public Safety for Mental Health pilot project, is that the one in conjunction with the fire department or is that a different?
Okay. That's the one.
Okay, great. Anybody else have a question for Sabina? See none. Thank you very much, Sabina, for giving us an update on what's happening in San Ramon. Hope you have a great Memorial Day and everybody has a great Memorial Day. Weekend and we'll see you again next month, the fourth. Thursday of the month. Thank you very much.
Thank you for inviting me.
Sure. And Brody, I don't know if Brody's here, but it's pretty late in Michigan, so.
I'm here, but I, no, I have a question for Sabina.
Oh.
Are you up for, I just thought of it. I'm sorry. Are you up for election? When are you up for election?
So twenty twenty two, I'm up for reelection.
And and when does the campaign start?
Well, campaigning starts, campaigning never ends for us, right?
Okay.
So, yeah, so that, you know, you can tell you to continue to campaign.
We'll keep you in mind when we look at our dues and how we're going to allocate money for campaigns. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much. I've always appreciated the club support.
And I wanted to recognize Sarah Lo for helping on the technical side today. We also had the help with Cecilia. Minogga, who helped earlier and checking people in all week. So couldn't do the meeting without those two fine women. So thanks very much.
And shout out to you, of course. It was a team effort and I'm glad.
That's true.
Shout out to Sarah for being a committee member on Innovation and Technology Committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Sabina.
Great. Okay, I guess that is it. Go and do what you normally do on a Thursday evening and we'll see you here next, next month.
Bye bye.
Everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night. Have a good night.